To get just an admin person, the request that we
within the scale, are we just automatically going to be passing wage adjustments by adjusting the scale? We didn't talk about that. But there will be people who follow, number one, outside of the parameters of scale. And number two, there will be justification to say, well, with the scale change, we now owe it a change. I don't want to miss that discussion and just say, now there's a big burden on the city for finances.
Right. So, I can speak to that. The decision on the wage scale itself does not automatically approve the wage increase for anybody. The wage scale itself is primarily a control that the council has on administration. So, you know, you don't have an administration in those rogue with, you know, adding positions that you haven't authorized or paying people higher than what's allowed on the scale. So, this is mainly just a control tool that the council has. As far as the increases, those are factored into the draft budget that you'll be voting on tonight already. And they only apply to the departments that we did deep dives this year and benchmark studies this year. So, it's not across the board. Even if there's a change in the wage scale here, it's only the departments that we're talking about that we did deep dives this last year.
Listen.
So, I have a question about the curator as well, but that's the answer. Do we know who will be in charge of hiring that and finding a curator?
So, it'll be placed under the Park and Rec Department. So, ultimately, well, ultimately it's the manager who charted hiring, but it'll be through the Park and Rec Department, Krista.
That's all.
I start the use of the law, make motion at the level. I'll move that we adopt Resolution R 1924 with updates to the wage scale for fiscal year 1920.
May I have a second?
A second?
Second, please. Counsel, any further discussion? Paul on paper?
I
I oppose. Do you record that as your address? Yes. I have a number twelve. Public hearing, proposed Resolution R 1925 adopting a certified tax rate provided by Davis County and adopting the fiscal year 2019 through 2020 budget. Rory, would you lead us?
Sure. So, the certified tax rate is scheduled to go down due to a 12.8% increase of property values. So, as property values go up, the rate goes down automatically to keep the amount of money paid in taxes for property the same overall throughout the city. If the council decides to change that, change the tax rate to something other than what is scheduled to be, the council needs to hold hearing, truth in taxation hearing, which will be scheduled for August. So, there are some changes that were made since the posting of the draft budget. And they're listed here that Steve put in. We removed the parking facility and put the money that was going to be put towards that into the capital projects fund savings for possibly next year and see where the dollar position is in the next year. So, we're going to just hold off here and see how that plays out. We're changing the construction of the culinary tank to six million, just covering the actual costs there. Moved the museum curator from the Brad tax as directed by council over to the Park and Rec budget. Removed the water fountain from Skate Park. There were some salary and benefit changes just from the annual election of employees. Some employees are married, some are single. So, the health benefit amounts are different. That's working. We removed the bluff ridge pavilion and increased and used that dollar amount put towards the Founders Park, Park and Lot Repair. And then just some other ancillary corrections, so.
Thank you, Rory. Again, as we're dealing with money, we've been transparent. Maybe we want to open this up for public comment. Those are isn't the most of them. And we really don't have any comments tonight. If you have something that you'd like to say with the council, you want to make a chat session, you can come forward and state your name, your best, your best wishes. You don't should comment on this. Now, a public hearing. Hearing is being now, post hoc, very. Rory, do you want to start us off this morning?
Sure. On this, I do think as we go through this, a lot of we've learned and had as far as that if your property taxes go up, the amount we're able to, the percent we're able to charge goes down. So, it actually does not allow for adjustment with inflation. So, there is a term called holding a rate where we just maintain that same tax rates that are accepting the decrease from the county, at which point we would actually allow funds tax likely to increase with inflation as well. Now, I'm not necessarily advocating this, but it is worth having a discussion. I would like to kind of go through and see what everyone's thoughts on this are. If we want to accept the tax increase, or sorry, the percentage decrease from the county, or if we want to consider holding that rate in order to help adjust for the growth we actually see in the city. So, I'm kind of of the opinion that I can go either way at this point, but it does need to be discussed. I'd like to hear your opinion.
All right. Thank you. David?
Yeah. The idea of this whole thing that we discussed before bothers me because if we just kept the same rate of which seemed to launch involved, then it looks like we have a bad time with everybody else. And so, I'm liking if we're not willing to entertain it. I'm going to say right now I'm leaning against it just a little bit because I think we've definitely jumped out of our budget. We can increase sales taxes and so forth. I think we can, I know we can do this without those extra dollars, but logically it makes sense to hold the rate.
Correct?
You know, the question we held rate and 12 points, 12 percent, that is significant in change in valuation of homes and properties. So, I am clearly to consider holding it just to hold it. If there were a discussion, it needs to be very specific for what for and for how much percentage other than just going for holding straight across, similar to our discussions last year. But overall, I don't see any pressing thing out there that we need to hold it for at this time.
David, have you finished?
Yes.
So, the only practical way to run a business is with a steady budget. So, if we were to hold a fixed rate continuously in city, we could project that we can take care of the same level of service going forward year after year. Unfortunately, the state legislature doesn't allow us to do that. They tell us that if we hold the same rate every year, that we're actually increasing taxes. There are other government agencies who hold the same rate year after year, and that accounts for the inflation of the needs of the services that tax pays for. I don't see why there's a difference. It really is the right thing to do. However, given our situation, we have to look at if we were to hold the rate, which would be a slight increase in money, where would that go and what would that do for us? I ran some projections just based on last year's figures. Last year, we let the rate go down. We didn't let it go all the way down. We let it go down some because of money that the state has managed and it comes out of our sales tax. So, it was services we couldn't provide because of that imposition. So, now I say to myself, okay, if we had a little bit of this money, what would we do with it? Let's assume just from the random figures of if we just held the rate based on last year's figures and not the whole rate, over the life of the bond, we could eliminate a year of our water tank payments. Now, we only have to hold the rate for one year, but by holding the rate that one year, that holds it for, you know, it still, we have to address it every year. But that money saved every year added up over the life of the bond eliminates a year of the bond. And that's just a really loose calculation. I can't give you accurate numbers. We don't even know exact amount of the bond today. But based on that, what we saved 65K last year, you add that up over the life of the bond, we could knock off a year. What does that do to the city? Well, bonds are, we all deal with right now the fact that we have bonds on this building, bonds on the fire station, other bonds have been paid on the police station, which is now, which formerly was the city hall, it's paid off. You know, we bonded for things. That bondage of money that we have to pay to those brokers prevents us from providing services that our people expect. So, the sooner we're out of that bond, the better, the less impact that is. Now, nobody here probably will be on the council in 10 years and say, gee, I'm so glad that's finally over. If we are, so be it. But the point being, we want to inspire the city to these bonds as the least amount we can. So, I think the conversation should be held. I think that that is a valid, valid way to do, or to use that money is to less commit our children to the future. But I don't think any discussion, because the way to run a solid business is consistent rates, consistent amounts of, people expect more service every year. They think that somehow we get richer. But in fact, we are expected to do the same with less every year. That doesn't work. People don't want services to go down. They want them to go up. I'm not saying that I want them to pay a lot more. I'm just saying I can, I can manage a budget that's the same. It's hard to manage a budget that goes down every year. We do, in fact, during budget season, traditionally talk about what we have to cut to give what we expect is a need in the future.
Listen.
Well, that brings up some really important facts. And when you're saying we need to work with a balanced budget, it's true. Just because property taxes go down for the county doesn't mean that our police efforts need to decrease or that our infrastructure decreases, our water needs, none of those things decrease because property values decrease. We actually talked about this in a previous meeting about holding the rate in order to not have to increase the fees. But I like what Dave has figured out in being able to remove a year from the bond. When we were discussing fee increases and property rate holding, I asked about 10 people what they would prefer. Would they prefer to see a fee increase or would they prefer to, what they noticed in on their property taxes? Enamously, they said they don't notice their property tax hold or decrease, either increase or decrease nearly as much as they see a monthly bill because usually they're, they're seeing that once a year on average. And that's not to say that we, this was their idea that they are not bothered by that as much as they are bothered by a monthly increase. And bond issue might be one of those monthly increases. I do think it's worth a conversation. We did have to pass along, we began last year and this year, and from now on, the legislature tends to implement some things. Sometimes it's not constant, but they tend to implement things that bring fees to the city. And we have to pass those along to the citizens, whether we want to or not. And so, I tend to think this might be something that we can use to maintain those payments that have to come out without passing them along individually in a monthly fee increase. So, I would be willing to discuss that.
I could follow up on that. The ongoing discussion on tax reform right now is whether we will totally, whether the state will go, we will have those savings, whether the state will say, we're going to tax different services, different professional opportunities, different things, because the state has realized that traditional taxation isn't funding the state anymore. One of the things they did last year was take a service and impose that fee upon all cities. And that was difficult, but my discussion with some legislators is that didn't hurt them. They're okay. They can do it again. If we're going to have those kind of things imposed upon us, or the possibility is we, when there was a little bit of discussion during legislative session amongst all of us, what happens if they decrease sales tax on goods but increase it on services? Does the city come out ahead or behind? We're not really sure, but the threat is we could come out considerably behind. And if we're running at risk, where do we have a mid-year cut because tax reform suddenly came through? What do we suddenly have to not provide to citizens? So, at least for the sake of discussion, I think we have to kind of reanalyze the model of how we provide services in the least painful way to our citizens.
Just a quick comment to some of the, as far as being to a couple of our representatives that the tax on services, it looks like because it's such a hairy, big problem that at this point it's immersed dead. Yay. That's because they won't resurrect it and try again. But at the same time, they're to alleviate some of that bond process as well. State does realize that they have surplus for us many years. They're doing just fine, replacing cell stuff as they were.
Counsel, would you allow me, would you allow me a point or a delay counsel of our attorney?
Paul, I've got a question. If we adopt a position tonight to adopt the certified tax rate that is given to us by the county, we then can approve the budget year 2019-20. If we decide to hold the rate, that budget is also tied to that decision as the two?
Yes. You have a provisional budget essentially for now. Like you said, hearing in August, to actually make the decision of whether to adopt a certified tax rate or something above it. So, you can be held operating as normal, but.
So, would we need to adopt a provisional budget?
Yes. Operating budget is the term.
An operating budget is good. See, we need to have an operating budget in place to see.
And then can we place this on for a discussion?
So, what I would ask counsel is, it seems to me the question is not budget itself, but holding, holding with the tax rate.
How much is the big question?
Well, so there's one other thing that's coming up that, first of all, this kind of seems unrelated at first, but trust me, I'm getting somewhere with this. So, first of all, I want to thank everyone who signed up to run in our next election. We have some great people who have signed up. I'm excited for candidates that are going to be out there. I'm looking forward to hearing their comments and their base. But one thing did not escape me, that did not escape, was the fact that we have so few. I don't know what is stopping people from running for public office, whether it is, I know there's plenty of people that have lots of great opinions. I read them all the time on Facebook. And there are lots of people with lots of great ideas out there, but none of them are stepping forward. And in talking with a few of them from time to time, you can say, one of the items that stops them from running is the fact that Syracuse is currently the lowest paid city council for miles and miles. Davis County is the possibly large portion of the state simply because during our session, as we council voted to take a pay cut, and we have never raised it since then. So, I would like to try and remove this obstacle for future councils to try and get quality candidates to run for office. I actually asked Steve to run numbers, and each of you have seen the 60th percentile. I don't know if we need to go all the way up to there, but I would like to get your thoughts on amending the budget to either this time or at some point in the future to remove that obstacle from future potential candidates for public office.
As Steve pointed toward, can I separate this resolution, adopting certified tax rate from the budget?
So, the action that you would take tonight, if you are considering truth in taxation process, is you would have to adopt the budget as an operating budget and then set a public hearing for August 13th to hold a truth in taxation hearing. So, it's one vote and one issue, but it does separate the two. And then on August 13th, there would be another public hearing where you would consider a certified tax rate a lot of the time from the final budget. Does that answer your question?
It does. And the final budget would be, where you could decide how to spend that budget spend.
Yeah.
Counsel, I would entertain a motion, now that we all understand the process.
Why Jordan brought up an amendment to the, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't want to talk about that because it relates to the first thing that brought up to me.
But if we do, if we open the public hearing, then we have more time to discuss that issue too. If we decide not to accept the certified tax rate from the county and hold a public hearing in August, then we have more time to look at the budget.
You're saying in August, we would do a budget opening to address whatever we decide on the tax rate, what it meant, isn't that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is we adopt an operating budget tonight, but then we would look at that budget, and if council decided that they wanted to act on that, that could be part of that budget proposal in August.
Okay. So, I have a question related to that. It is, if we adopted operating budget only with an intent to hold it here in August, are we allowed in July to further explore the budget between now?
Yes.
So, that we have more time to review this and that?
Yes.
As far as I know. Is that true, Paul?
Is that accurate?
Yes, that is true. I mean, on July 1, this budget would be in operation.
Be in operation.
But you would have time to discuss what you're going to decide in August.
But I want to know if we can discuss even more than that. If we can discuss more questions that we have about this budget overall between now and then, knowing that on 13th, we're really just dealing with that, that we could approve at that time any other budget adjustments.
Absolutely. You can amend the budget throughout the year, even though we just did a K for the last six years.
I understand that, but I'm more concerned about having time for review because I think there are things that we didn't get into it deep enough. So, I would go with that because I think with this and others, we need discussion. Maybe only half of the writers, they do need discussion.
Do we want to do the R so that we can put them on the agenda? Or do you want to just put in discussion?
I want to ask you.
I think tonight we just accept the interim budget, operating budget, and then set an agenda item to go over the truth in taxation as well as any agenda of budget updates based on those changes.
So, I will say, because I'm one of the people that's on the fence about the tax rate, that I'm enough on the fence and in the middle that I'm willing to push this off and have a truth in taxation hearing and more discussion on the budget. I don't fully agree with everything that's been said tonight, but I agree with enough that I can vote to what you've done there. So, what kind of motion do you need?
I need a, I need a motion to adopt. What I'm hearing is that you want, I mean, you want to adopt an operating budget and that you want to consider holding the rate actually.
That's correct. That is we do.
This is another question in front of us. There have been some other questions added to that. That will give us time to answer those questions.
And I would accept this as an operating budget and open up consideration for. And I would accept this as an operating budget and open up consideration for maybe possible holding the rate or not, with an agenda item in the next work session to discuss.
If the resolution R-1925 might be amended, passing, or do we need to do something different?
We're just double checking this really quickly, but in order to proceed with advertising the treatment taxation hearing, we need you to include in your motion what certified tax rate you would be considering. So if that's the current tax rate, if you want to cite a rate on it.
What's that?
Does that happen tonight? Could we do that in our next meeting between and still be advertised?
So if I say I just want to simply hold the rate, can we still modify it?
You could go down from that, but you can't go up.
That's fine.
Give us a motion, Jordan, then, and we'll look for a second.
Okay, here goes. Let's not get all this done. I propose that we accept resolution 1925, adopting the fiscal budget, 2019-2020 budget, an operational budget, while at the same time, look at holding the rate going forward with the option to go down. That's it. And then we will have a rest of a future agenda.
And you need a date, don't you, on August 13th?
On August 13th.
I'll second. I'll second. Is that the right way to do this? Are we essentially saying we accept part of the resolution and deny the other part?
Well, what you're saying is, on July 1, the city will operate under this budget.
Yes.
And then on August 13th, you will adopt your new amended budget with possibly a new rate.
And as well as entertaining any more discussion of other things?
I would suggest a kind of amendment.
Go ahead.
That it includes that in the July work session, we would address any other budget here concerns as we're bringing it on.
Not in the June work session.
I don't know if that's always scheduled out, but I don't think that's it.
I would like time in both of those work sessions.
I would too.
Right, right, and then give those other items taken care of, and then make a decision in August, is that correct?
Right, so that doesn't need to necessarily be in a motion, as long as you just agree.
Well, as long as we agree to it, that changes my, that's way to my vote at least.
Right. Is my motion...
And we will settle in further discussion.
Mayor, I just want to be clear, if we're going to be discussing all budget items in July and August, the city needs to operate, we're going to be spending money on this budget.
My concern is not all budget items. I gave a list of a couple that I thought deserved discussion. We didn't get a discussion, but I think that if we have time, we should. I think that some of those specific items, they need all five voices. It's not a little long thing.
Well, I disagree with Dave. I think we had all five voices we asked. We asked people to come and sit down with the city and vote. Generally, that budget has been set by most of the council. I see Rowley's point that we're going to go there and start spending money on things that you may have a question.
So, and I hate to throw a wrench in there, but if there are things the council does not want us to spend in this budget, then you need to tell us before we adopt this budget.
Thank you tonight.
That would be great.
Okay. One thing that I have a real problem with is the surveys. And let me just make point to that, that four years ago, during the election, right up through election day, if you listen to all of the survey researchers, we would be serving under President Clinton right now, and President Trump had absolutely no chance. But it didn't turn out that way, because they know how to tell people what they want to hear and say, oh, this is what our surveys is. So I'm really against survey research, because I believe that right now, if you want to find the right people to tell you what you want to hear, you will. What I'm really concerned about is that that is just one more step in removing the council's voice. And I want to sit here and be beaten and be told, well, what our people say is this, because the 100 people surveyed all agree, when they may not represent the 30,000 people in the city. I'm really concerned that we have systematically been quieting the council's voice. And I brought that up with you last week. We talked about it. For those who weren't part of that, I mean, I can go through that process, but the council is a part of democracy. And we have used time limits and scheduling to make it less and less input, and I don't agree with that. I think that the council should be, that there's a reason to elect five people, not one, not two. We can't select only certain members to chime in on certain things. We should be doing it all in public meetings in front of everybody.
Let's go through the council and see how the rest of you feel on survey. Jordan, can you start?
I think what I was brought up to me, I wasn't a favorer, but I do find that it seemed like a lot of money for research that didn't have enough of a sample to be effective, but still have the potential to just being a waste.
I'm for it, and I think it's actually a pretty good price for what we get. And it's only one piece of data. It's not the only thing we ever look at. It doesn't, it informs our decision, it doesn't make our decision for us, and it's better than the data we currently have, which it would be, I don't know, a few voices on Facebook and voices that talk to us, which are our leaders and our families and stuff like that. This gives us a broader perspective. It's just one piece of data that could go into our decision.
I would say that I'm for it, because we are the representative of the people, and that our voices should reflect that. And there's a lot of claims made frequently about, well, I asked this question on Facebook, and they're notoriously inaccurate, because they don't forget anyone from voting multiple times. You have a certain group that is members of that page. You have certain people who will respond, other people will never see it. Granted, that does happen somewhat in regular surveys, but you don't have multiple... Everyone has a chance to have their voice heard, and everyone will get one shot at letting us know. And it's not, it's a lot more accurate, and I believe it's worth the money.
I would like to just say to that, not everyone gets their voice heard. There is a sample selected.
There's a predetermined group that will be used later every time.
All right, Lisa?
Well, my understanding was that this was a grant coming. Is that correct?
No, this comes right out of our tax...
From our budget? I remember when we had a discussion about, when I received a phone call regarding this, this is just one, one survey. I don't approve it forever, and I don't approve it for everything. And one of my suggestions was that we only do future agendas for future issues for our city, not anything about what do you feel about how this was handled, or anything that has already taken place that we can't do anything about. I wanted it to be forward thinking and forward improving. And so I do agree that this is, this was a good amount of, was not very expensive, and I felt like it was going to be informative. And just as Councilman Peterson said, it informs us. It doesn't become the only piece of information that we use. I don't think it quiets our voices as a council. I think it informs our voices as a council to see what certain amount of people need. And all surveys are done by a portion, not a selective audience. There is no such thing as an everybody votes.
I just want to clarify one thing. I don't know if this will change anybody's mind or anything, but just to clarify if there might be a misunderstanding. So there is a, there is a sample set that is considered a scientific sample, but for each survey, it's open to anyone in the city to take. But the difference is on the back end, after the survey is conducted, you can slice the data to differentiate between what the survey panel said about the issue versus those who aren't on the panel. Or you can just combine and see what everybody said. But it is open to everybody.
Thank you. So it's open to everybody, but as I said, there is no such thing as anything that gets every voice heard. There has to be a particular amount that we question.
Counsel, what I have heard this evening substantially is what I've heard before. And staff can, what the staff can do, and the only thing that they really can do is take the certified temperature of the council. It would appear to be that there is a majority that supports this, and would consider that it might be served in the future. Any other, anything else, Dave?
Yeah.
Nothing else? So I think the one, the decision before us is whether we would apply the whole public hearing, the whole current tax rate, or accept the tax rate and then accept the current budget as the operating budget until such time as we held that public hearing on the 13th of August. And I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Are in favor.
All opposed, if you may. For one, would you before that end? Listen. Would I obtain the surplus property, Joe, broadly?
Sure. So this was discussed at the last council work session. There was one change made to the draft, as you see in the packet, whereby at least twice a year, a report would be given to the council of all surplus items, of the items that already have come before the council for approval.
And that change was made, because I didn't know that.
Oh, right, yeah. Yeah, it's in there.
Please.
Anything green?
Yes, right here.
Please, any of those that were listed?
Yes, having read through it, and we discussed last time that we want to make sure there was no way to kind of dodge any representation of the council about what's going on, and which we never suggested you would. It just ensures that for the city's sake and the citizen's sake, that they know that surplus property is being disposed of properly and sold when possible. And so I think that it's great to have a report for everything that's being sold and surplus. So I approve of this.
Jordan?
I'd like it.
Right.
I just wanted to say really quick, I looked up music for purchasing, and I couldn't find anything on there about the amounts that need to be approved, whether it's two grand or five grand. And I remember last year when I was trying to get the piano, that was kind of a concern, because the announced, put it over two grand.
Right. And I apologize. I meant to send an email to you on that. So the way our purchasing policy works, if something is less than $5,000, then we don't have to get comparative bids. If it's over $5,000, we do have to get what's called a telephone quote, or you get an actual quote, and that's what we document it. And then I believe the next threshold is $10,000, where we have to actually get formal bids.
Okay, that's great. Will you just send me a link to your work?
Yeah, I'll send it. I can send you our purchasing policy.
Okay. I just want to make sure that I'm following the good guidelines. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I think we need a policy that's what addresses it.
All right, I entertain a motion.
I move that we approve adopting the 36 surplus property policy R-19-26.
Second. The first and the second. Any further discussion, counsel? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Can I see if we can before that end? Proposed resolution R-1927, adopting the 36 museum five-year strategic plan, is broken.
Okay, this was also presented at the last council meeting. I know there was discussion about working further with the museum board to improve upon this. This is kind of like to establish a baseline for the next five years, so it's up for the council discussion and consideration.
I'm glad to know that this is just a baseline, because as far as your five-year plan, some things have dates and other things don't. And so it's, well, this might happen in the next five years, I'm not sure when. And I think we need to have a lot of that memorial now, so that we can realize those goals specifically in the timeframe. Otherwise, I guess that's really good, too.
And you have a bid?
As I said in the last meeting, I thought this was a great start, but I thought it would be great to write this to the work session, so that we could see if we could improve upon it, make it more specific, make it more of a five-year business plan. It's some general ideas, and it's a great start. But this is the kind of thing that if you took it to a bank, you wouldn't get approval. So to me, that says that we probably shouldn't approve it. We should say, we are happy to help you with this and take it all the way, because it doesn't go far enough to be a real plan.
I'd address that, Paul. Yeah, I could. And totally open to if you want to discuss more. This is something that you want to work on with the museum board, is their draft, their plan. And it's up to you if you want to.
And I'm going to do some disrespect to those folks. I mean, I think they did, they're doing great. They have been wonderful volunteers. They want to do something better. I just, again, I say to myself, if I took this to a bank, would I get them on to open this business? I don't think it goes far enough. They'd say, thank you, you've got a great idea, I would be hard to support. But I want to take it to the step that we have some real targeted goals. If we do this, it's to achieve this. And it's to achieve this by the state, so that we can partner ourselves. What happens, as we know, often we're very senior, and I appreciate respect every part of that, but we know things like, if we don't get some knowledge from some of those senior people soon, what happens if they die? It's just all lost. What happens if we need certain things in place to cover for the possible loss? So I think that we just have to go further as a business plan.
Thank you. Listen?
I think that's a great idea, especially maybe including some things that are regarding interviews, things like that, and nailing yamminis, and saying, use a little more setting stuff. What would this resolution do? Just, is this saying this is all we would require from them? I hate to give them the burden on their already taxed time and ability, you know, to say, well, we want a whole new plan. Really, they've already been doing it, but they have some things they'd like to improve upon. I don't want to make this a terrible burden for them. So what is the point of the resolution?
Okay, so, and I'll expand a little bit on what some possibilities you could do with, if you want to work on before adopting it. So first of all, the reason for it tonight is by ordinance, they are required to present a plan for the museum to the city council for approval. And there may have been one a long time ago, but it's been many, many years since that's been done. So the idea was to either approve or not approve the proposed plan. A couple of things you can do if you want to work on it further with them before adopting the plan. You could bring them to your work sessions if you want to work with the entire council. You can designate one or two council members to go at their meetings and work with them in their meetings as a subcommittee of the city council, and then come back to the full council with recommendations and discuss. Or just communicate through your liaison, your council liaison, changes that you want. And then they can kind of rotate back and forth. So those are kind of like bearing degrees and bearing burdens on different people. I would say the most amount of resources will be spent if you bring it back to the full council and you deliberate it. Depending on how far and how much deliberation it needs to be, if you can not get out of it more than two meetings, it's probably not a big deal. If it's going to go on for six or seven meetings, yeah, they might feel a little overburdened.
Mayor, for me?
Yes. So what I'd like to recommend is, I actually think this is a good start. I'd actually like to approve this for now. We already have a liaison assigned. He's already starting to work with them, just starting to help facilitate a lot of this. We also know we are bringing someone on board, a part-time, the next budget meeting, that's, we just authorized bringing on that person. I really like that person to kind of facilitate this. These people, they've done a great job. I do think we need to give them a little more help. So I'd like with help Doug and his part-time person. I'd like to accept his plan today and task them with the job of creating a little more vision in here and actually implementation steps of how to get it done. And I think you're really getting into the knowledge of the museum and their staff and what the capabilities are in getting that done. And I think that's something that Doug and this future employee will be well suited for.
And I think it's a good idea to have the person working on it, invest in decisions and what they're like, said what they're willing to do and what their past is.
Yep. So what I invited us last night was having, is pretty much exactly what Doris said. I would like to have that person, the curator, involved. And I'm excited to be involved with this group now, more than I have been, should have been before. So I want to approve it tonight, and a big part of why is because I think it gives them a vote of confidence. It gives them a start. We can say, you know, let's, the limit is more, but hoping for this is, yes, we love what you do, anything that pays for it.
So I want to just be clear with it. I'm not trying to approve of them with more. I actually want to invest in them with more help. Because what I, and I think the fact of having a curator be a part of that is very solid. And that person can agree to it, and it doesn't need to be done in our meetings. But what I don't want to see is, I don't want to say, "Oh, your plan could work, but it could also fail." I'd like to see, "What can I do to make sure your plan succeeds with all of your votes?" That's what I'm hoping to accomplish by saying, "How can I help you more?" I'm just, it's not that I don't appreciate what they've done, and I think they have good intentions. But I see holes that not done checked. It just, maybe may just not make it. And I don't want that. I want to make sure that it does make it.
So mayor, could I speak to that too? So what you could do, if I'm hearing correctly, you could adopt the plan, have the staff, curator, and liaison work with them. And you can actually come back and amend the plan. You know, just because you adopted tonight does not mean you can't see it again for five years. It can be amended at any time. So you could, you could make that part of the motion with instructions to further develop the plan and bring back his amendment later today. It's up to you either way, it's fine.
I'll go ahead with this, Courtney, online. This, I'd like to propose we accept the resolution, R19, set up the 36th museum five-year strategic plan. And at the same time, tasking our liaison as well as our future curator to work with the museum board and staff to help refine this plan to make it implementable. Because we really want to see this museum succeed, plan to be a huge asset to our city. We would love to see tour buses stopping here all the time. But we do think that it's going to take a little more work. This quite outlines, but I think these guys get it done.
I have a motion. I have a second. I have both a motion and a second. And then, you, what's the word? Further. Any further discussion, counsel? You're in none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Would you report that as unanimous, counsel? I have number fifteen, resolution, R19-28, directing the city, circus city planning commission to take final action on the adoption of the general plan during its next meeting. And if it's okay, Noah, I'd like to start this one, and if you have something you'd like to add to it. Counsel, you remember after the 2050 task force that we put together? We met together as a council and a work session. And one of the things that we were concerned about was the scope of this project. I did not Terry and Terry and Terry because of so many other things that are, the German word is "abhängig", which means dependent upon, but actually left hanging. Everything else is left hanging until it happens. And you'll remember, we established that with them in our scoping meeting, a deadline for action on it. But the last planning commission meeting, because of absentee issues, they left that with a tie. There was no way to break that tie with even numbers there. So counsel, I have visited with you all about establishing a resolution directing the city planning commission to take final action on the adoption of the general plan at their next meeting. They're not returning it back to us for action. Did I say that right? Any discussion? Let's start that one with Dave.
So what I've kind of reflected about in the role of the, in this situation has, we've had very similar frustrations that have gone on. When we were talking with the people at Woodside about the adoption of the hospital zone, we mentioned frustrations and pronounced without, "This is the only thing we need to take care of." The adoption of, several have changes there with understanding standards. We have similar problems in the past where we didn't even have a core show off, let alone six people that were deadlocked three-three. So I kind of feel like, I'm thinking about this in great detail, that this is out of place. I feel like you're going to get two new planning commissioners in two meetings anyway. By demanding that they break this tie in one meeting, that doesn't really change much. You're going to, you know, we, who knows, maybe they'll break it anyway. But we were told in the past that we couldn't put this much pressure on them when it came to Woodside. So I don't know why we're going to have. And we're talking about two weeks. So I feel like in good faith and in good spirits of the quality of planning commission we provide that they are, we shouldn't tell them what to do. We should listen to them. And if they don't have a recommendation, we got to work it. If this went on months and months, we should take it right back and do something. We may have to. But we're talking about two weeks. I don't see making arguments today to tell them they have to have a sol. We've not done that in the past.
Thank you. Listen?
What's your reference to the two weeks? Say, does it have to be two weeks?
So they'll meet next week. And if we pass this tonight, we're saying, "If you don't come to a conclusion, we're going to just do it, go forward with action." Two weeks after that, they'll have two new members on the planning commission. So two of the people who are on one side of this issue will be gone. And likely, that tie is broken very nicely. So of course, if a seventh member shows up, that tie could be broken in the next, in a week. So I just don't see the need for us to demand this action. At least, I mean, if they were holding this up, this had been a month. But this is one meeting, but they didn't come to a resolution. They've only conceded one time. So I kind of feel like we ought to give them a second chance before we make a resolution that says more else.
And I was going to be impressed they've had it work a while, not just one meeting.
They only talk about a vote.
No, what do you want to go through? Yeah, they have had it for a while, but this last meeting was the first time that they actually voted. Or tried to vote. Maybe we've been working on it for maybe it's like three months now, since we finished the meeting in March, so.
But it happens other times. The first time they try to take a vote, they don't arrive at a solution. Then they come back to another meeting.
Is this up for discussion, if you want to follow?
Let's go around the corner and then move on.
Well, I'd like to hear other opinions before I weigh in. I was of the opinion at first to back this up. Having known that it's only just been one vote, I'd like to hear what has happened in the past and what others weigh on.
So I'd like to ask Noah, what exactly is this holding out?
Primarily related to the map. In the general plan, the proposed general plan, there are multiple. There's a general plan designation, and then there's zones that are contemplated in that designation. It's essentially making the general plan more general. So there's a lot of discussion about primarily the map and what are the three meditated zones and that. And so they did come really close, and I think, Noah, and I think they'll work it out. But it's up to you guys whether or not you want to, you know, put that down.
So one thing that I would like to see is, do we have the list of zones that are allocated to each type of general zone? I guess I'd be curious to see that. Like an R3 in a, like a PRD category?
So the general plan map will have essentially six categories, or we have like 12 zoning categories. So there's low-density residential, medium-density residential, high-density residential. So a PRD would be within a medium-density residential.
So that looks like, sorry, take us up the tangent. If this is not holding up any active applications, and the planning commissions only have it one week, and Dave's got a great point that this could be resolved in, in a couple, few weeks without us having to hold a piano on our heads. I'm okay letting this go a little bit longer. If it's not resolved by the next meeting, I'd like to see this from back up.
But, okay, I want to support the mayor in the timeframe that he laid out for this whole process, which was what, there's, that had him do a buy plan?
June 4th.
Okay. Another concern I have, and I don't know how much of a big deal this is, but there's going to be two new members who need to be brought to speed. Now, maybe that's not a big deal because I know Kenny Towns is on the 2050 task force. Alan, Ago will see on it. So he definitely needs to run with the speed. So that concern a little bit, because I don't see it just happening three weeks from now. If those two need to be brought to speed, I can't see it happening next time if they all perform, but there's no guarantee. So I'm willing to support this resolution to get it done, stay on timeframe. But I am agreed that they have to anyway, the next meeting.
Okay. In watching the process, the planning commission actually reviewed each of these maps and/or had questions and presented their opinions. And every time at the next meeting, Noah presented the results to them, even at the end of meetings, and said, "Okay, this is what our results say." That you, that's the planning commission, say. And then, and they all agree that that's what their in-toto opinion said. And then it all comes together for a vote, and a couple of them decide that they don't want that result when it's representative of the entire planning commission. I agree that a due date is appropriate for them, and they will have that next week. Because the fact that if you listen to their discussion last time, there were many compromises, well, a few compromises proposed, but nobody was willing to compromise in the end. No one was willing to go along with each other's ideas. At least none of the ordinary. And just like for school, a due date is really good for those who are in a press date and not have to make up their minds, and not have to work at it, and not have to finish the project that they've been tasked to do by way of us. We task them, we give them direction, but they do not act without our direction. And so it is appropriate for us to tell them this is due, and to make up their minds, and to tend to test. And they should be able to do that next week. And it is a problem to have the new people caught up to speed because therapists are not represented in this. So what we do, start all over again, scrap it? That definitely is appropriate.
Why not set the date for July 2nd? That gives them two meetings?
There's no reason. They have all the information. If they can't figure it out from last meeting in two weeks to make up their mind what they're going to do, then another bunch of these isn't going to help.
It's not going to, it's agreed.
Exactly. One way or another, figuring it out is agreeing upon a compromise or whatever they're going to decide. It's, they have all of the tools in front of them. They have all the information. They have all the packets, all of their surveys. Everything is there. Nothing is going to change within additional two weeks. This is should be due.
It's a vote. We can't mandate that they vote one way or another.
If they can't figure it out, then they should pass it to us. And that is what a due date is.
Do you remember that harsh on the planning commission of us?
They haven't, we've never tasked them with doing the general plan.
Well, we tested the three, with passing that a certain date, one way or another.
They've done an entirely different concept this time. And each of those opinions were shown to them, "This is what you guys said." And they said, "Yeah, that's what we said." And so when you put that all together in a plan, and then you say, "Oh, no, I don't like this." Well, that was your opinion.
Let's do this. Let me just support the third here, for everybody's in. Let me just, let's go into my head a little bit and where I was coming from in relationship with this. When I visited the planning commission on our first meeting in April, I gave them some resources that they normally don't take advantage of. Their meeting schedules, and I logged by law. I told them that they were free to work additional evenings if they needed more time. They were free to also call special meetings if they needed more time. My purpose for maybe expediting this and trying to move it along with us, our parts master plan, so many of the things that we are kind of stuck in, low gear are, all of them, the whole side is this general plan. And so trying to keep them moving forward with a deadline that would, that would expedite them coming to the decision, that they had all the resources that they needed. But hearing what you were saying today, I, this concept of a resolution to force them into a decision was mine, and I will amend. I will draw it back and hear them one more time, Noah, next week, to meet on this. But I hope you will see the logic of what I was trying to do, just to move forward if you don't have a parts master plan. One of the things that is really critical for the city, I would be, is to increase our portfolio with our single meeting and with the situation that we have acres and acres and acres of what was, we find it's commercial land, not being developed over time when development in other places has accelerated. I am concerned that I would like to develop a master plan, a general plan for community economic development, for economic development. The general plan, land use, is a key component of that. And that's one of the reasons I was pushing this forward. Is I want to move forward, uh, this next year, create an economic development plan. So I will draw up a resolution, uh, and Noah, if you would recommend it more than the planning commission, if you'll just do your best with them to see if they're productive, I mean, uh, because I don't want such a resolution to buy us, should, should the lesson. Are you happy with that, are you okay with that?
Thank you for the insights, I appreciate everybody's giving it and to know where the reasons why and where they're, where you're coming from. So I, I do like the idea of giving, pulling it back for one more meeting and then introducing it again and that may just change.
And then my concern too was that I knew that we were going to have two new members of the planning commission. You know, Keith did attend the 2050, but he does not look into this at the depth of the planning commission, I would be careful. Bringing them up to speed, I thought it was, I thought it would be best to have the existing planning commission make this decision rather than carry across the line. So, uh, Cassie, I will draw that resolution and we'll, we'll move forward with, with the planning commission on that. Council word item number 16, uh, public comment again, if there are any from the public who would like to comment, we will hold to that. During the sitting, I have a close public comment, just go to Mayor and council announcements and sort of move to it.
Sure. So, just a couple of things. First of all, I want everyone to know about our upcoming splash water feature, the island at Centennial Park grand opening. It's going to be great, um, I want to make sure we get a great turnout, apparently it's had over 70,000 shares on social media, so it's going to be a heck of a party. It's going to be the best kind of, right?
Interview, the timing and...
Yeah, so, okay, it's a furlough. Uh, so it'll be starting at 10 a.m., I believe, Chris just put together a script that she will let us be aware of.
We'll be blocking what you need.
That's right. Uh, so just, uh, come to 10, um, I think we're, we're going to give the mayor some time to, uh, talk a little bit and, uh, have a couple of little things and then, uh, we want to, uh, recognize those that, um, donated money to this, that is greatly appreciated. We have, it's, it's better because of the donors, it's better because of citizens that put themselves out there, that they, we have extra shade, we have additional little features that we couldn't have done without their help. So we are so grateful for all the donors that came forward to help us build what truly is a magnificent addition to our city. Another thing I wanted to bring up, um, I've had a few requests from the citizens, um, with regards to, I know the school is out now, but they have requested several times, um, just in the past we've had, uh, the city, as we've talked about, is, is tries to pinch every penny we can to try and get the most out of tax dollars. And so part of that is, um, when we can, we use workers from, uh, the nearby jail. These are people that are very close to getting out, these are not the, the, the worst of the worst, these are actually just your neighbors who may make some bad decisions or someone like that. However, that being said, um, we've had them working near schools as schools being let out during recess and it, I've, I've said a lot of them. First, I want to apologize to you, uh, that are, are listening, that we, we understand that your children's safety is paramount. And, and that all of us on the council are also parents, we understand what you're saying. And so, um, we've talked with the parks and rec and we've worked that agreement where we will try and keep, um, those people away from schools while their children either exiting the schools or recess, just because we don't feel like we're still at risk at the same time. It's, it's a perception thing, we don't want anyone to feel at risk in our city. So, uh, we talked with, with the parks and rec and they have been more than even that, we will juggle those and make sure that, um, we're able to accommodate, uh, park maintenance and our budget at the same time, like to make sure that everyone feels safe. That's good for me.
Rather than announcing, I really, I had more of a couple of questions and one of them was answered for that event. I, I'm just wondering if I can get more information on the council's expectations for the parade, uh, Syracuse, any, anything else throughout that week? So as other people are, and yeah, Chris, I think you can listen to that.
Or you can send us an email either way.
I'll send you an email and then just outline everything that's going on that week, so that you guys will know what's going on. Obviously the parade is on Saturday, 10 a.m., I think that's what it would be, no, 9 a.m., it's 10 a.m. So if you can be where you guys normally are, Lisa, I'll give you the directions. I mean, we always send you guys, give you guys like a little thing of where you're supposed to meet and stuff, it's at 8:30 down by Trailside Park. So you can be there, you know, 8:30, 4:00 in the night, it'll start right at 9 o'clock and we'll have their shirts and stuff there. We'll have it before, usually by Friday, so everyone handles out. Um, but I will get you, uh, the flyer and everything, so you guys know what's going on throughout the week. You're more than welcome to come to every single thing, we love seeing you there, but also when you're busy, so. Um, there's championship baseball games on Monday night, Tuesday is the senior luncheon, Wednesdays are children's night and that is, um, coming back to the Stone Age, kind of, you know, bedrock and stone, that kind of stuff, so the kids can come dressed as that. We'll have some dinosaur running around, um, and that's where it covers park. Thursdays, it's just a lot of related carnival rides and then Friday is just over at the, at the park with the vendors and, and everything. And Saturday with the pancake breakfast, 5K entertainment all day and the parade, all this stuff being, you know, to do. Friday night, we do have, um, an animal show, the, the movie night, um, fairy tale celebrations. Friday night, we really try to make it about Syracuse citizens and just make it a fun night for them because Saturday, it seems like we'd get a lot of people from out of town, but Friday night, we try to make it really just about three nights for Syracuse citizens to come, so.
You went to car show?
Car show's also going to be on Saturday. Yeah, it'll be Saturday, um, till 3, so going from 11 to 3. I know RC Willie's also playing on the car show, I didn't know that before.
We need to try and coordinate with them.
You know, if, if Morgan's not going to do drag, then we gotta try and do one.
I know, that would be cool, huh? Oh, we used to coordinate with RC Willie and then they moved to go over there and then they just stopped doing it all together. So they haven't done it for a few years and said they don't want to, so we've been really trying the last few years to reach out to someone to do the car show because we know that that's a draw, so we finally got somebody back. They didn't coordinate with us until we saw a flyer that they were doing the same day as us. So, we will remember coordinating with them again, but we do have the antique car show that's coming back, so that'll be good. Any other questions, Steph?
I'm wondering about vehicles, my husband said he'd be happy to drive us in his Raptor. So we have, is that for us if we get?
Hey, if you guys want to do something, do something like that, I would love for you guys to.
It's like a shame to drive a Raptor at 4 miles an hour.
Well, he may not, he might just tear down the road and he'll hold on for dear life. But we've got the whole bed that we can put chairs in and we can do whatever, so if you don't have anything set up, then I'll just...
We usually just do it with a big trailer, but if you guys want to try something different, I'm all for that for sure, all of you guys are for that, so.
The whole works is doing an entry this year, so I was actually kind of worried about.
Great, see, he's usually your driver, he's balanced, so a Raptor is great. Thank you.
It was a Raptor, it was great. So I actually, I want to just hooked up that 150. So we would have to fit the back of the bed.
I will just put chairs in the back.
Cars as well?
Men, just, yeah, ladies and boys.
But that means we can't remain with our family.
Oh, do you want to, can we pull a trailer behind it? We can have some of this in the bed, we, we've got a trailer too.
We'll work, I'll work with you, Lisa, we'll work, we'll work with you, okay?
While, while we're on that, uh, Chief, uh, Councilman Savage has agreed to meet with the possessed parents group and they're going to be available to us as soon as we know who those individuals are, I mean, a personal call for those individuals. And the meeting that they need to attend is at 7, 12:00. But if there's a meeting, uh...
Our briefing.
Our briefing meeting?
I believe it's eight.
Is it it?
Yeah, I, uh, I'll have to confirm.
If you'll send, if you'll send an email to Councilman Savage at 7:00, I should...
I'll, I'll include that in the, uh, information that I have in my...
Um, first of all, just want to thank Chief Duncan for helping us to get a permit for the moving. So we're, we're getting this, um, we all have bonds and we're, but we do need to coordinate with the food trucks. Chris, if I can get the information clear, um, and just make sure that there are more that, um, can't understand why they wouldn't be, but you know. All right, um, also, we have adjusted that a little bit so that we come to our booth, get information about increasing communication with our families and then we've decided just having them do one activity instead of two. So they get two lunches, one coming to the booth and another for doing an activity and then their voucher is good. And a reminder, also on that day, it's a passion lunch, do we get it? So step away from the island for an hour to get lunch and feed all the pet and cute ladies, uh, over here.
In the community center?
Community center, yeah, the one on 2:00, 8:00. And, um, we have quite a few this year, yay, it's increasing in popularity, we're very thrilled. And then a passion at night at 7:00 p.m. at the high school. And thanks again to the police as well for helping to be their escorts as they show up on stage.
Thank you, Karen, thank you. Preston mentioned the bi-thing that's going to be, uh, assisted with the Arts Council. And the Arts Council is also going to be on a team party that will include cast members from U D and the Leeds for Children. And that would be great for little children, kind of like, this is kind of, but so, um, there are posters up already on City Hall, so take that and hire your little ones. But I haven't, I haven't, I haven't, so...
You can sign up to it, Dave.
I would be, I would be excited. Well, I think it's going to be Mrs. Parks and Chirr.
I think you'd ask them where you go.
Yeah, which are meeting.
Oh, which are meeting, yeah. So, that's it. And, uh, Council, you were all very reciprocating about the orchestra we put on the work session for discussion.
So I want to thank the fire department, we have brand new neighbors who've moved in across the street. And two days after they moved in, we, this Sunday, we heard a big heavy air break outside and it was our police, or our fire department. Their alarms were going off, we moved across the street and they were so impressed, they came from Las Vegas and they were so impressed with our department, so I just wanted to thank you for making us look good. And, um, what do we need to help with for the, for the splash catalog? Do you need us to do anything besides be there?
Be there, just be there, we're going to hold out shirts for you guys and then there's just a little one on the ground, ask questions and stuff. We're going to have snow cones and music going, pre-snow cones are music and food trucks and the park facilities, we can have stuff going down, we're just about aiming and you guys will be there to come and ribbon, um, and be a part of that, but nothing that you guys have to do. If you want to jump in line and help us do snow cones, you're more than welcome.
I want to make one quick public service announcement about fire group. Much thank you for those who came, uh, over a couple of weekends ago. We've had a fire alarm go off at church. Surprisingly enough, it is not connected to the fire station directly, as some people say. If you hear a fire alarm in a public building, my public service announcements do not assume that 911 has been called and notified. We waited for quite some time until someone called and we were in our forces, they were there right promptly after we let them know. But it's just one of those things, I guess we assume, yeah, we assume that in a public building.
But it's not a symptom.
If the fire alarm's going off, we assume that they get contact, so. That's not the case, you still have to call 911. And that's at church policy. Well, I don't have anything to go with this, I'm a member.
I do, a couple of things, um, I need to make a clarification on one of the items, uh, discussed on the agenda. We don't need to reopen it, but the bond, um, bond resolution authorizes, authorizes, uh, the administration on the type of bond. And it is our understanding, um, from our work session, that the direct placement was the preferred type of bonding that we wanted to get there at first. Um, because it gave flexibility for everything, is that correct?
That's correct.
Three.
Um, the only other thing was, uh, I do want to highlight, uh, every quarter we do an all employees meeting and we, um, we award employee of the month for the previous three months. And in the, in the manager's report, um, so for February, I want to highlight Troy Jameson, Firefighter Jameson, who was awarded, uh, employee of the month in February. There's, there's several examples of him going beyond the call of duty. Uh, one I mentioned was he, he actually received an award from, from a business person for a service he did. He used, he used the money from the award to, to buy some, uh, I think some mobility equipment for a resident in our, in our community who, who needed it. Just a great example of service. Uh, in March, it was a team award with, um, across a couple of departments. Um, we got Holly Thurgood, Holly Crathorne, Misty Moyes and Brooke Durfman, um, in, from, uh, administration and then Curtis Bauer from, uh, Public Works. They worked together, uh, to reroute all of our meter reading and it resulted in a reduction of time to read, uh, the city's water meters down from two to three weeks to six days. And so they, they did a great job on that and, and increasing the efficiency of that. And then in April, we wanted to highlight an active service, um, by Julio Posner. Uh, he's a building permanent tech in CED. Uh, there's a elementary school having tours for the building and he volunteered to, to help them on tour. He noticed a, a young boy, um, who only spoke and understood Spanish, um, so he wasn't really catching the tour. And so Julio recognized that and, um, just took the initiative to walk with him and around the building with the tour transit form so he could, he could understand. So it's just a good reminder that, you know, as a city, we don't, we don't just serve the general public, we also serve the individual. And so we, we recognize that act, so I just want to highlight that for our employees.
Thank you, I attend all and, uh, and the rule is method and there is one we call the teaching is, teaching and instruction is done by individual staff members. It's a, it's a good, it's a good, it's a good session with the staff and the cookies aren't bad either. All right, Council, I would take a motion to adjourn and then go into the RDA meeting. Second, I have a motion to adjourn and a second, any further discussion, all favor? All opposed? Should we record that as unanimous, let's go to the RDA minute meeting, uh, call that meeting to order and call for an adoption on the agenda. So who? I have a motion to adopt, I have the second by Councilman Muddingham, all favor? I oppose. That's to show that this is unanimous. I am going to propose a resolution, RDA 1912 to adopt the annual list for fiscal year 2019 to 2020, as required by section 17C 1, so on YouTube, I'll put it in and then annotate it 1953. Rowley, are you going to lead us through this one?
Yes, uh, so, uh, this is the RDA, are you, sorry, I was, I was talking, Paul. Are you done with RDA and then the NDA?
Yes.
Okay, so...
Because the agenda had...
That's the way it's on.
Yeah, and Cassie gets that and I'm all over.
So easy enough, the, the RDA budget has not changed since our, our work session. So any, any questions on that, we can handle it, there are changes.
So can we just take a motion to adopt it?
Well, no, sorry, I'm a member of the committee.
Okay, having, having seen this, I, and this requiring color hearing, I have a very positive hearing. During the single color present, I have a close color hearing. Motion to, uh, shut off the agenda? Uh, we...
Uh, do we hear anything? A motion to adopt RDA 1912?
Yes.
And a second?
Second.
Second by council, and a solid, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's to show that it's unanimous, motion to adjourn.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Show that it's unanimous, Cassie. They were going to go into the, to the RBA, call this meeting to order, and a motion to adopt.
So.
Have a motion to adopt, second?
Second.
Second by Doug. All in favor?
Aye.
All in opposed? Show that it's unanimous, Cassie. Public hearing, would you bring us up ahead for this one, Roland?
Okay, so yes, the municipal building authority financing mechanism, it's where our bonds for our, our buildings are, for City Hall, improvements to the police station and the fire station. This is the budget for, it's primarily for debt payment, and I think it is scheduled to retire in 2028 under the current schedule. And if there are any questions I can answer?
Is the water tower going with this?
Excuse me?
Is the water tower going to be added to this?
No. The water tower will be added, will be straight through the, through the, it's a, it's a revenue bond from the utilities.
And if we're in public hearing, you're against seeing no comment from the public or close to public hearing, enter a motion.
Motion to adopt.
Any, second, please.
Second.
Second by council. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sorry, I was sliding. You okay with that? A motion to adjourn, second?
Second.
Have a second. Council on Savage, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, sir.